...in the afternoon, just to be all used up for the morning. This is the work session for July 6th, Lincoln City City Council meeting. Work session. It's eight o'clock. If we could do a voice rope call, I'd appreciate it.
Judy Casper.
Mark Riley-Hoagland.
Diane Kuz.
Mitch Parsons.
Richard Appicello.
Stephanie Lee.
Ron Chandler.
And Dick Anderson. Our agendas are handed out. Mr. Chandler, why don't you lead us?
Okay.
Lead the parade.
So, this is the first of two work meetings this month. You had asked that we have two topics per work meeting. So, the first one ties in with the city's priorities that you established, which is long-range planning. Specifically, we're going to talk about water and sewer. We will not be talking about infrastructure, such as pipes. We'll be talking more of capacity, where our water comes from, where our sewer goes, and so forth. Anything to deal with pipes and that kind of stuff will come as we go through just our regular capital improvement plan. And then, the second topic will be solid waste. Originally, this was proposed as a plastic bag ban. The state took care of that. And so, we've just simply titled this a discussion on solid waste. My hope is, is that we will have a few aha moments, whereas we go through this information, you go, "Ah, aha." And see some of the things that we have planned well for, but at the same time, that we always need to be cognizant of as we look to the future. So, with that, we're going to jump right in and start talking a little bit of water. And we're going to be using PowerPoint to help go through it. Stephanie is here to do the heaviest lifting on this, since she is our expert. And I will try to point out a couple of those aha moments. So, the city, all of its water is surface water. It comes from primarily Schoner Creek. And we have the rights to use that through water rights that are issued through the state. We have sixteen and a half water rights, however, there are some limitations. I'm sorry, sixteen and a half cubic feet per second. I'm going to shift and talk about millions of gallons per day. That's a little bit easier of a concept that people are familiar with. Our plant is designed to, so that we have two plants that are on Schoner Creek. Upriver, we have the water plant. Downriver, we have the sewer plant. Okay? We get our water from Schoner Creek, and we put our sewer water after it's been cleaned back into Schoner Creek.
Sewer Creek.
Sewer Creek, yeah.
Depends on who you ask.
Freud has nothing to say about that comment, wouldn't he? Our plant is designed to process six million gallons of water per day. These last two bullet points are the aha moment. We only have the ability to process, no matter what our rights are, we only have the ability to process water that's actually flowing down the river. And we have to plan for the lowest point, or the lowest amount of flow. You can't design it for the high flow, and then droughts come in, and your planning's all off. The lowest flow that we have seen is 3.8 million gallons per day. Okay? Our current peak demand is 2.8 million gallons per day. That's, as long as there is a fire flowing, the fire will be affected as the fire trucks draw from it. So, as you can see, there is about a million dollars, or a million dollars, I am really off. A million gallons per day that we have is a buffer during its lowest flow point that we've seen. Okay, Andy, you want to add in that? Any questions on that?
No, but I just do want to comment that I really appreciate translating the CFS. Because I have a document to translate that, so thank you.
Now, you had received two documents in your packet. We're not going to go through those in detail, because there's a lot of detail in it. One is in 2015, when David Hawker was still working for the city, I wanted you to give me some information pertaining to our water supplies. He's given that. And then, in 2016, we updated our water conservation plan. We'll deal a little bit with those as we go, but by and large, those are for references in the future. Okay?
Ron, let me just go where they're recording. Diana, get in this joint, yes? Morning, Diana.
Morning.
So, again, this million gallons per day is your buffer that handles growth or any other extra usage of the water during a drought season. So, that's what we have to plan for, is the low flow.
What's our capacity? Total holding capacity?
Storage. Um, let's see.
I think it said seven and a quarter, but the problem with that is it has to circulate.
It's about, yeah, we have about seven million in storage. About five of that is usable storage.
I'm going to skip this one. When you look at the future water needs, and again, if you remember that 3.8 million gallons per day of drought year, you can see that according to this table, we hit that point in growth at 2030. Now, the water conservation plan says that we're good for 20 years. That's now three years old, so 17 years. So, somewhere within 2030 to about 2038, you're going to be running into that issue. Now, what that really translates into is that if you have a low drought year, and you're in this point right here, that's when you have to start implementing water restrictions. Okay? And in the water conservation plan specifically, there's quite a bit of information on what kinds of restrictions are available, who is the person in authority to call those water restrictions. They deal with both commercial and residential. So, as we talk about long-term planning, this is where you really are looking at getting out beyond this and saying, "Okay, how do we deal with the fact that you could end up with a water shortage sometime over the 2030 decade?"
I would also point out that the population has sort of been normalized, and that includes hotels, restaurants. It's really not a number you want to focus on right now. For example, our normalized population is 14,000. So, the population is just a reference for, you know, our peak demand. We measure that. We know what that is, and so, it's mostly focused on that peak demand number. Because at any given instantaneous day, we could have that population is a lot more than that, to 40,000. But that's where the storage comes in. And so, most of these, what I'm trying to do is chunk this into days. So, here's our daily demand. We want to keep up. Even though we have the storage, we still want to keep the supply up for that daily demand. So, that's why everything's sort of in a daily kind of chunk. But of course, there's lots of ways to analyze it.
Now, there's two ways that you can deal with this. One is to increase your water supply, and the other is to decrease your demand. Water supply increase is a very difficult thing to do, because all water is controlled by the state. And there are property rights associated, water rights associated with those. And so, it becomes a matter of trying to acquire new water rights. We went through that about five or, oh, it was a long process that ended about six or seven years ago. And we were able to obtain new water rights, but they had some serious restrictions on that. Do you want to talk a little bit about this?
Only in just that, water rights are one thing. We have, I think, 40 CFS of water rights or something. We have a lot of rights, but some are very, very small. It doesn't mean that a water right on a creek or a stream gives you the right to just take out of that stream. So, what we really use them for is almost like trading or preservation. You know, if we do come to the point where we do need to build a new intake somewhere, those water rights would come into play with the intake and the permitting process. So, we've got, you know, several small, tiny, I guess, I would say, streams, potentially, that we could build a new intake on. But we're talking environmentally and physically typical and expensive. With state and in general, thinking about water, building new intakes, really want to be focused on making the most of the rights you have, the intake, I'm sorry, making the most of the water that you're producing. So, focus first on conservation. The state is really going to make us, you know, and rightly so. We're all going to be, you know, wanting to maximize the water stream that we're already pulling water from. Maximize that use. But when it does come to a point where, you know, your growth simply doesn't allow you to continue to use that water source, you know, we can in the future build a new water intake.
So, part of what Stephanie said that's kind of critical as we think of water planning is that there is the acquisition of the water rights, and then there's approving up on the water rights, which means, she mentioned, another treatment plan. How do you now, if it's on another stream, how do you now make that water serviceable? Those are very expensive process to do. Again, so as we look at long-term planning, it's both making sure we have the rights to enough water, and then, we also have the ability to prove up that water right. The other area is in water conservation. This is where the city has been very active for quite some time. And the things that we have been doing are not particularly painful to the residents, but they are expensive. Perhaps the biggest success that the city has had is in its leak detection program, plugging leaks. In 2011, they became very, the city became very aggressive in that area. We had estimated that we were leaking about 35% of our water going through our pipes. It was leaking out. So, the city initiated a leak detection program, a leak repair program. That has now dropped to about 18%. So, it's a significant improvement. From what I gathered in studying these reports, is that that was kind of the goal. Very difficult to get it all the way down to zero. And the closer you get to zero, the more expensive it becomes. You have to do a bit of a cost-benefit analysis to make that determination. But the progress the city has made has been very, very significant. And it's an investment that we should continue to do and continue to make. Especially given the fact that there's always leaks. Where, like, you plug one, another one's going to start. And so, it's one that we always need to stay on top of, because it eventually can get ahead of you. Other considerations that have been made, or either recommended or in the process of, or have been made, which have not been particularly painful, is a rate structure that encourages conservation by penalizing overconsumption. In other words, you have a base rate that gives you a certain amount of water. And if you go over that, then you're going to pay for the overage at a pretty good price. The effort behind that is to encourage people, strongly encourage people, to stay within the base rate. Now, one of the things that's really quite nice about Lincoln City is that we don't have, other than in commercial areas, we don't have a lot of outside water consumption. In other words, we don't have yards. We have gardens and things like that, but you don't have a lot of people that are watering yards throughout the summer. In states where that happens, it runs as much as 80% of your water usage is going out into your yards. So, we're fortunate in that. And that, I don't know that that's anything that the city has really encouraged as much as it's a cultural thing for our area. So, in that area, we're very fortunate for that. So, that's kind of a bit of an overview of our water. Because of past actions by the city councils and administrations, the city is in pretty good shape. However, time runs, and growth happens. And it's something that we need to stay, be aware of, and begin planning now, because long-term planning for water is a very long-term process.
Diane.
I have a question, and perhaps you already went over this. Sorry, I was a few minutes late. On page 12, I was going back a little bit of the packet, and it's talking about the demand. And it says dialysis reduction. Well, that's coming back on to be available now. But I don't understand how, is there a different water usage, something we need to be thinking about with that?
I would say the demand of dialysis is very, very small in the big picture of it. I think that was just, we, our big users are the hospital and the casino. I don't know what I-
It was 96,000 gallons.
It was probably, when he wrote that, it was probably part of the hospital.
Right, or just part of the biggest uses that we were identifying as-
But it is a big user of water.
It is a big user.
It's a large customer, that's how it was listed.
Okay, so, large customer, yeah. So, we'll, again, that'll kind of come in as we forecast. I mean, our forecasting numbers are, you know, very conservative right now. So, but yeah, we will make sure that we incorporate anything changing.
I was just thinking, that's such a big wonderful thing that's coming back.
Yeah, that is, yeah.
Just want to make sure we're aware that it's there. And another question about Hawker's menu memo, sorry. Let's see. Oh, his last point, number 16, he just said, he suggested that some independent expertise review his analysis. Has that been done?
Yes.
Kind of, sort of?
Yeah, we're, that was, you know, an analysis. He just wanted to make it a point that that was his, you know, and that that was always open to. And we looked, we round-tripped that. We've looked at those numbers in our development of our water conservation plan. So, it's been an ongoing update, really.
Yeah, that's good, because I'm all in favor of peer reviewing, especially things that are of this importance.
Yeah.
Sure. And then, one more question. Beginning on page 66, it was just the water levels for curtailment. And I think you kind of hit on some of those points, but are we at any of those now?
We have not, well, let's talk, I'll just put it in perspective here, because we didn't talk about the mid-coast yet. Maybe I can just segue to that. So, the mid-coast partner, water partnership, is from really all of Lincoln County water providers. And we've been meeting now for a couple of years, just to really get a handle on what all of our issues are. Again, make sure we're doing long-range planning, that leverages each other, supports each other. Some of those interties in the north county are possible, not so much here, but still, it's part of the longer look. Curtailment, the last time we had to enter in to curtailment, I think, was in '08. That's the year that's reflected, or '09, one of earlier years. We did go into curtailment level one, which is, but last year, several cities, several providers in the north, in the south county, did go up to curtailment level two, because we are dependent on the streams. And when we have a low water year, we're very fortunate in the gradient of Schoner Creek, the way it comes up, the way it is formed, and we're not as susceptible to drought as some of our partners, you know, some of our neighbors to this out. So, that's why it is kind of, you know, when you look at those numbers, curtailment one, level curtailment two, those become really concerns for the community. I mean, people start to pay a lot of attention, and say, "You can't do this." Especially businesses, they're up on that level, where you get to level, you know, certain levels, and they can't do their industrial, their, can't do their industrial, you know, restaurants and hotels. So, it's really the benchmark that you need to make, that you need to look at. Gives you a little bit of control when you hit a drought year, but you really don't want to get to where you're implementing those.
So, was it last year that we were in a drought, or the year before? I forget.
Last year, there was curtailment levels in the south county, but we did not have any.
We didn't get it.
Right.
Wasn't the only time we went into curtailment, was when we were losing the 48th Street main line?
Maybe that was, yeah, because I, yes, and then-
Before we had the redundancy of coming up Drift Creek.
Thank you, because I could not remember, yes.
It hasn't been so much a flow issue.
That's right.
We were losing the pipe, the drain is mounting.
And then, everyone filled their bathrooms, about their bathtub, and it drove down, it drove down the reservoir. So, education is a big component when you start implementing curtailment.
So, for me, and why this is an issue for me, is Ron showed the chart, you know, 2030, 2035 is 10 years away. Drift Creek, adding the Drift Creek took over 10 years to obtain, you know, and that includes the water rights and a pump. So, I mean, there were a lot of issues, but it doesn't just, you don't just turn a switch. And as Stephanie indicated, there really aren't water rights available, and there's too many water rights already. So, I'm uncomfortable that, as to, as our population grows and the weather changes and everything else, how we're going to really handle water with this. The only thing left is conservation, but also storage. And then, that creates all sorts of confusion and coordination and that kind of stuff. But, so, I'm hoping that, you know, we at least start some kind of a plan for that, that we counsel. And that's why, for me, the big push on future infrastructure is that, not that we'd end up with adding to the volume, but we'd have a plan of how to get there. And like the leak issue, that was a big deal. It, the plan was when, originally, when I asked about that, it was as we find them, or try to find them, we'd fix it. Well, come to find out, what we really needed was a high-tech equipment, so we couldn't find them. And nobody wanted to spend $50,000 at that time to, you know, find them. So, we did. And we've all got a friend in Dave now in the water department, because he likes his pipe and equipment. And he's finding a lot of lakes. So, you know, I just, I liked Hawker's memo, because it's a nice reminder. He talked about the meter questioning whether the calculations are correct, and the residential meters being slow, or thus could inadequate data. We've got conservation measures going. I think council can certainly do, the high-peak season rate would be an easy one to pop, you know, up. And then, again, for me, it's kind of managing the watershed. We haven't talked about, you know, that whole watershed, where the water's coming from. We, the city, own a little bit of acreage, but we need to stay vigilant as to how that's being managed. So, there's plenty of things under the whole aspect of water, besides the pipes in the ground, that I think get forgotten. And I don't know what to move forward, or how to move forward.
The suggestion that I would make on going forward, especially as I've read through, as I've read several times now, the water conservation plan, is that it's a technical, in many ways, it's a technical document, and can be cumbersome to get through. And so, the first thing that I would recommend that we do for you is to identify, in a little bit easier language to understand, of what has been done, how it has worked, what has not been done. And look at, starting with things that are the low-hanging fruit, the easier ones, and then you go from there. And come back with that kind of information for you to review and look to as far as your future goals, priorities, budget items, and so forth. So, that's kind of where I ended up with it, is that if we're going to really go forward with being ahead of this, as we have been over the years, then it's to kind of put this into an easier-to-understand action plan.
For me, that's what I'm looking for, some action. What are some of our options that we could do, and, you know, at least move the needle in a positive sense? Stephanie, you talked about the population, and I understand, don't worry about it here, but the impact, I guess, of, you know, some of the things we do have going, is these urban renewal, proposed urban renewal districts, trying to develop more land, add more land to the city, has the potential that, they're probably already watered anyway, included in the 16,000. But does that not, should we, how much should we be thinking of that when we are moving land around, or urban growth boundaries, or annexations?
Well, our plan, we do need to plan for servicing urban growth boundary. That's a, you know, state of the art to us. So, as we kind of, where we go, where we densify, where we, you know, move around, isn't so much we can, isn't really so much a factor in just the total demand. You know, how we get it there, just off the cuff, I'm not really seeing. What does matter is our peak demand is in, you know, this month, or whatever, you know, our summer months. So, as we build attractions, the more people come here on those weeks, on those days, so hotels, restaurants, whatever kind of, you know, high-density type of things, those will just have to be, you know, part of our forecast of make sure that we can provide those high-water demands, like the casino, for example. I mean, the people start at, you know, things start adding, and large amounts of high-water demand start coming into play. We'll need to really look at that. A lot of those can be buffered with storage. So, again, it's kind of like, our goal is to be able to service the urban growth boundary. And as it grows, it's our goal, and we need to be able to manage that. But, yeah, I just don't think there's anything strategically we can do in the way we grow to really help that.
Is adding storage a way to go?
Storage helps you with that daily, that high demand. So, yes, storage is a component. But you can only store so much, and you also have to be able to produce enough to fill your storage. So, again, it really comes down to whatever, your storage gives you a buffer, but it's always what you're drawing out and what you're producing. And, you know, you can level it a little bit with storage, but you can't take out more than you can produce for very long, type thing.
I have a question about the watershed, where we get our water. What, who are we working with? What are we doing? What's the plan for keeping that?
Hang on to that question for just a minute, because I think we're going to get there in just a second. Before we jump to the next part, the second- Before we jump to the, the next part, the second part of this topic on water, who we wanted to bring up is water quality testing. That right now is actually very pertinent because of some state regulations. We test for water. There are the nine items that you see that are currently regulated, and, and then those that are unregulated. We have been dealing with the state on three substances that we are testing for, which are proving to be problematic.
That sounds stupid.
That sounds, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
These are all, we're really good at these.
You're right, you're right. And so, thank you. And so, do you want to just jump in on where we are with this?
Just in that, so everyone knows, we do a water quality report. It's online every year. It's very in-depth. Our water testing has been very good. We are to the point where we actually do help the EPA by testing for things they haven't regulated yet and giving them our reports on what we're finding so they can see, is it there? These are the last five things that haven't been, standards haven't been set yet. So we're really in the, you know, the cutting edge, if you will, of what's, of what those regulations are. And for our water quality standard, drinking water quality standards, our, our quality is excellent. We're, you know, our source is good, our treatment's good, and we're, again, very fortunate in our source, that it's an easy source to treat.
Any questions on that before we get in now to what council is talking about? This is really on the regional approach. We are part of the Midcoast Water Planning Partnership. If you recall, in your budget, this last year, they had requested some funding. You had said, you basically said, put it into the budget, but bring them in to, to bring them in to discuss this with us before we authorize payment of that.
What's, what's up with the climate change folks? It wasn't this group?
No, it was this group as well, because they came right into the, and this was Spencer Niebel's letter.
Without discussion or description of how they would use their water.
Yeah, we actually had two, two of those that were in that case. So, so Stephanie has been a very active member of that organization, and so you're, you're on again.
Well, just as I already stated, this group was funded by the state. Well, could you switch down to the number of partners? Because, so, yeah, let me just, okay, so these are all the current partners. So what we did is, well, what we did, what, what the consortium did is start inviting everyone who has a stake in water in the mid-county. Users in water stream, in-stream, you know, environmental groups, owners and providers. A lot of these you see are the ma, are the, the largest providers, Lincoln City, Newport, Toledo, Walport, Gopots. We have dozens of small, private water districts that we're trying to bring into the fold a little bit, what's going on with your water, what's going on with your systems. It's a, it's a big, you know, it's a big resource, vital resource. So it's been really interesting to see all these groups get together and come up with, ultimately, if you could switch back, Ron, kind of remind me what I wanted to say. Our goals are, go down, our goals are to have a common understanding, forecast, use the same information on forecasting, seeing what works, develop a shared vision, build relationships, solutions, quarter, oh, leverage local and statewide resources, we're trying, we're working on that, contracts. So again, oh, so these were goals. Replace aging infrastr, so we all, you know, water providers basically came down to having the same goals. We've got aging infrastructure, we've got increased demand, we've got late-season pressure on our source, we can create redundancies, enter ties, but that's still, we still only have so much of a source. And again, we're helping lots, us, the smaller providers make sure so, you know, like Panther Creek, for example, those, you know, they, they can be on the realm healthy, not then depending on maybe an emergency or some kind of supply from the others' providers. So, let's see.
Much of the discussion that has been going on recently, kind of the big gorilla in the world has been storage in the Newport area and, and in many ways, whenever I have gone to one of these meetings, that has been the big issue that everybody talks about, because it's the most expensive. But it certainly is not the only issue that they're dealing with. And, and while Newport in particular is trying to figure out how they can solve their storage issue, these other items that Stephanie has been talking about and working on are going forward. And one of the questions that I had asked as we were looking at this some time ago was, so when's the end date for this? How do we know that we're done? Well, there really isn't an end date, because water is always ongoing. And so as one goal is achieved, another one will come up, as one issue is dealt with, another one. And so this will be something we'll be involved with for this regional planning for the foreseeable future.
And I, I'd hoped, because I haven't attended other than, I think, the, one meeting, the way to the South, and, and you're right, the Newport Dam dominated the meeting, and it I see, and still see, the water issue as a regional issue, and for the county to grow, and all our municipalities. And I was hoping this group could help nudge that along, whether any kind of retention of water, you know, has the ability to help the rest of the area so that we have some joint funding and connectivity and all that kind of stuff. And so far, my limited exposure, it's just been, once again, Newport center. So I'm not a big fan of just drag-off that. And 70 million is a huge amount to be centric on. So, you know, I, I would hope, and I know there are people that are dusting off the Rocket Creek Reservoir idea from the Rocket Creek of Deepo Bay area, of a big dam and reservoir and a regional fee, that kind of stuff. Only to satisfy everybody that, you know, that one really needs to be put to bed or forgotten, because so much work. Lincoln City and Newport actually funded a lot of study up to a point, and then Newport at that time dropped out. So there's still, for me anyway, a little bit of angst. So thanks a lot, boys, and now you're going on your own, win your game. So I would hope we could stay a little more regional. And against, Rick, your government, there's, there's change with the concept.
So I think I could, in a couple of minutes, Deanna, I saw a great presentation from the Newport Public Works Guide at the last Small Cities meeting. Newport has issues that we don't have. They've got a fish processing industry, they've got rural, they've got maybe something else, big giant water users. Fortunately, all we have is our tourism industry. It doesn't compare. If, if Newport doesn't get enough water, those, they're, they lose jobs, they lose, you know, fish plants and things like that. They can't take water from the Quinney River, it's too salty. They've got dams that were built a long time ago that give them reservoirs, but they're, they're not safe against earthquakes. And the, if a modest earthquake would hit right where those dams are, the people downstream have 30 seconds to get out. So they, they have to do something, and it's, the $70 million is to replace the earthen dams they have in the creek reservoir and concrete dams, so they have enough storage. There are only other alternate water sources, and I found this really interesting. They actually have an intake from the Sluts River. You think about the geography, the Sluts River runs by my house, and you think of like, you know, we know about the continental divide, where water goes east, water goes west. So our, our county divide is somewhere around Cape Fowlweather. They're taking water from the north side, and they don't want to do that, and it's actually very difficult for them to get that water. So they're very limited in their options. And the 70, that's why they're, they're down to $70 million to build a dam, which does nothing for us. It serves the southern part of the county, not the northern part of the county. Question I have, and you just referred to it, is, is there a place, maybe inland from, say, Cape Fowlweather, some high-up spot that could conceivably hold a reservoir that would actually serve north and south Rocket Creek?
That would be the Rocket Creek side.
Yeah. So, and way more money. But the question is, does it make sense for Newport to put in a $70 million project that doesn't do anything for the North County? Or could there be, I'll draw a number out of the air, a $100 million project that might serve the entire county?
Depends on what the council's thinking. I mean, if their council's thinking about Newport, then they're going to go for that. But if they're, when was that, 2015, that the study was done, and then they said, shh, the Rocket Creek?
Before that, they dropped out.
Honestly, really, we haven't.
We had a joint meeting.
In this whole consortium that we're part of, that question of just, you know, focusing on one to distribute has not been a part of the discussion. Somehow Rocket Creek dropped out of the potential options, and I don't know why. So we can definitely, definitely look at that question again, and make sure we understand what that source could have provided, could provide.
Or at least why it was stopped.
And why it was, yeah, and what, what's going on with it.
I think how you get, how you convey the water from wherever this, that is, to here is problematic. I mean, just from the topography, I mean, it would have to be underground, or, I mean, it would have to be drilled, and that, I mean, I don't know how that would happen because of the, you know.
Yeah, honestly, Deanna, they're talking about just laying it on top of the ground.
It's pretty high, it's 500 feet up. I mean, it's pretty high up there for pressure-wise. I mean, if you would have built.
Underneath the power corridor.
I think you, you've got a, oh, I'm the forest. You know, 70 million, and I go with Councilor Martin, you know, whether it's 70 million for Newport or 100 million for region, I think you've just seen the state kind of pull back. They only gave 4 million to Newport on a $70 million project. I, I would say, because it's not regional. And, you know, yeah, but yet Newport's happy to have the 4 million and moving on. And I, I just, again, think we have a lot.
How far along is that process now? Now that they have the money, are they going to go, okay, we'll stop, and now we'll wait, and then what?
They started already for part of it.
That's right, that's what I'm saying.
They're doing their roads, and they're trying, you know, they're, they're poking their nose into where they need to be.
And so part of my thought, too, is Midcoast Water Planting Southside is a great idea, but what's in it for us? If we, if we have adequate water sources, clean and all that, and the only thing I think is, there are going to be other issues, but getting rid of bio-waste and wholeness and emergency planning, other, other regional concerns that we're going to want to be part of. And if we would not be a part of this, I think it would be hard to ask.
It, it does us no harm to be a part of this, and it can do us some, a lot of good. However, right now, just like the mayor was saying, the, the issue is that storage issue. And it kind of sucks the air out of, out of the room for any other issues. But, so one of the things that I heard then, just kind of came from everybody, is to look at the Rocket Creek project, why was it stopped and cannot be revived? Okay, that takes us through the water issues we wanted to talk about. We just mentioned this, also, to come back with some, some type of a preliminary action plan based upon the Water Conservation Plan, David Hocker's memo and Stephanie's knowledge of what we have been doing, and bring that back to you.
I was puzzled in the Hocker memo, maybe this is outdated, that the meters are not accurate? Or are they updated? I mean, it just seems surprising to me that meters would be inaccurate.
And here, I'll just mention this, since I wouldn't want to, technology is going to help us quite a bit with that. We have been replacing our meters, the older meter, the older stall meters were misreading, which did make it hard to calculate our true water loss. I mean, you know, so we're, we're improving those, but one thing a smart meter grid can give you is an instantaneous read on what's going on. And so even to this, the point where a property site has a small flap, and the toilet flap that's just barely leaking overnight, they'll read that. So that water loss really adds up. So the smart meter technology, we're continuing to replace our meters, we're, but, you know, the next level of really counting in on what that water loss will be is to, is to really improve our meters and bring them all up to. They're all touch meters right now, they're just not tied into the ultimate technology of it.
The evolution of water meters is kind of a fascinating thing. You know, it used to be the top lid, take a read, it's written down, and it comes back. Then it was you pop the, pop the lid, you type it into something, then it gets transmitted. Then, and the technology that we're using is that you have a wand, the wand writes it down, sends it back. That's not the latest technology. The latest, actually, there's two technologies above that. One is that in our non-touch meters, where you drive by in your truck, it picks up the signal, it transports it. But the latest technologies on those is that you don't even drive by. The signals are picked up by a central location, it gets transmitted, and it gets processed in that. Each stage is expensive. Meters are not cheap to replace. And, and so, you know, ultimately, if money were not an issue and I could wave my own wand, we would have the latest technology, but they are expensive to continue to change out.
What is expensive? What's that number?
Well, so, what I can tell you.
It's a good question.
So Seal Rocks just spent about half a million dollars in a grant match thing. They have about $2,2500. So we're talking about maybe a million dollars to convert Lincoln City to a.
Over how long of a period of time?
Well, it would just be, it would be, a company would come in and, you know, it would be a project. We'd put different, we'd put sensors in our main line, we'd do a little things where we could then talk to a, a central computer and be able to see what's going on with our system all the time. It happens very quickly.
So are there funds to grant, to Seal Rock, a grant?
We're, we're, I'm working on that right now. It's, yeah.
Do we have like a?
Cost of ounces on it?
Leaky faucets, you know, we were talking about, you were saying just that, I mean, like, how many shower heads are there in the toilets, you know, with that whole, that estimated savings? You know, we were talking about leak, underground leaking, what about above-ground leaking? You know, and so that's probably a real thing, and has there been? I don't, I don't even know how you would say, you know, this is how much money you could be saving, or whatever, bigger picture, I don't know.
And I can tell you on the commercial side alone, that would be cost-saving.
That's, right, and that's really where I'm focusing, like, that whole thing, you know.
For the individual owner.
Correct, well, yeah. Right, because you have people who are managing places who don't care. And the water just runs and runs and runs, and it's like.
And the water just runs and runs and runs and it's like, where are our water bills so high? So, yeah, I think that would be a problem.
So is there some, is there a way in which we could do something like, hey, here's big picture? It's, we're talking real money, you know?
Under our current system, it's a little more difficult because it requires to go out and read, for example. Uh, there's, she doesn't live in town, but there's a lady that was, that Stephanie knows quite well, that was constantly worried about her meter reading. So we were out there almost weekly, uh, reading her meter. That's labor intensive, you gotta go out, you gotta put the wand in, it gets transmitted back. For, uh, fully electronic meters, uh, you can do that all, it's, you can do that easily and readily when it's available.
Why were we going to hers?
Uh, because we give good customer service.
Good answer.
How was her meter?
It was actually good.
Was or is during the check-in?
It was not the meter.
But it does show you another thing that, that we deal with a lot is, um, one little tiny hole, you know, one little tiny leak and it's not just the money. Yeah, it's maybe ten dollars more a month or something, people don't even notice it. But it draws in our peak year. It, it really takes water out of our system that no one's using.
Right, so the cost per person to the city is a real...
So why don't we, you know, look at what that would look like if we implemented like over two years or something?
Is, is there a way to monitor currently what is being used? I was myself, I had a leaky toilet for six months and the water bill was astronomical. We didn't pay much attention because it was summer, blah, blah, blah. I mean, we weren't told from the city, like, hey, you don't get enough water there for a swimming pool.
Kinda, I don't know. One thing, the sure way to do it is to turn off all your water and go and look and see if your meter's moving. And, you know, ideally we do that all the time. But, yeah, our, our customers are, we do, Ron can speak to this. We do try to note when people do have high use, but it's hard to do.
But that's labor intensive and stuff, that require, remember, all of our bills are processed electronically. That would require somebody to be looking at all of the bills saying, oh, this, this is off, it's higher than it normally is.
What you have on the payment side, the auto pay feature does have, if in the event that the bill is higher than whatever you set, it will alert you so that your auto pay doesn't go. So that process, you know, if you tighten that down to say, hey, a family of four should not be paying more than the base fifty-two dollars a month. If it goes above sixty, you might have a problem. If you put that out there, like, your hotel of fifteen, there is this estimated amount of usage should be within this range and if not, that way. But I know that's on the billing side, not on the consumption. I don't know. That way.
We're ready to move on to sewer and if everybody else is...
You know, what, is there a, it's safe to say that, that except for peak, and I shouldn't say it that way. We have plenty of water when we have good water. Our peak season is the, you know, July and, and August are the, the months that'll take us down, that, that peak because we, we may not be able to deliver during that. So actions, uh, should be focused on is trying to bring down the peak or building reserves for that peak set.
And protecting our source. I mean, that source is forested, it's logged, um, so making sure we're keeping our tributaries healthy and getting as much clean water flowing in as we can, that's another piece of it, but yeah.
Are we, are we on like a, if it becomes available for sale, we wanna know to buy it thing in the area? How did we buy the last piece of land?
It was county owned and so we sniffed around and they were getting ready to log, gives what it amounted to.
That's what I mean, like, make sure that we as the city...
Well, I think Stephanie's point is if you saw the partners on there, there were timber companies. They, they are managing those and I think the who's asking all of us to have a relationship, positive relationship with the timber companies, um, where they're talking to us and letting us know in advance of what's going on. Now, they, quite frankly, react negatively or aren't, uh, how do you say that? The environmentalists come after them quick, so they're slow. They force, or slow to disclose when they're ready to harvest or that stuff. But they don't want, um, actions being taken. But I, I think it's, it's back to relationships with those people.
So before we leave that, I have two things. One, um, is that we, I had asked about the health of the watershed, where our water comes from and that's kind of touching on it. But is there, is there, do we have? So how do we have the conversation with everybody? How do we, what do we do towards watershed health?
Well, um, the US Forest Service and private, uh, is seventy-five percent of the watershed ownership of our intake and twenty-five percent approximately is private timber. Um, those are managed by, you know, the state and for the most part, I think they do. And they'll tell you that they do a very good job of adhering to forest practices. We also have a county road that goes right up the side of Schooner Creek. So we're, we're very close partners with the county in how that road's maintained. Spraying, for example, they don't do, they don't do along there. We've got some projects in play to help with some culverts and some sediment that runs off during the winter that just adds to encisment and, you know, damage to the creek. So we're working, I think, pretty much as much, oh, and the San Francisco watershed council is, is looking at that watershed as well. We've had several, they've done several projects on some of the tributaries, um, in the upper shed of that, of Schooner. And also, um, I was gonna say, there was something else, um... Oh, and so we also have, this is the second year where we've gotten a grant from the state. And the entity, but, um, it's called Source Water Protection. So it's administered from Business Oregon, but DEQ's Source Water Protection, uh, group administers now. So we study the creek, what's contributing to losses, um, how can we make it healthier? And these are the types of, these grants are giving us a lot of capital dollars and, and, uh, study dollars to, to look at. So I would say that we're, we're doing a lot. Could we do more for, but we're doing a lot to help preserve the health of our creek. We just need to keep, keep on, it's nothing you can just do once and walk away from.
So do we have some kind of commitment towards a watershed plan or something? I mean, if you get run over by a bus, Stephanie, how does this keep going?
Oh, it's not me. It will continue on. There, you know, there's things in play, but I guess, Deanna, we don't have a water, a watershed management plan that just focuses on Schooner in its own body and all the players with it, like, dummy four.
Would that be a good idea?
Yeah.
Stephanie, don't you think it's, it's the, all of us, you know, one reason why we have a work session is to educate us all, like, you know, past and present council members and San Francisco Creek folks. You know, I, I think, uh, why, for me anyway, for, to, to keep reminding councils, that the importance of the infrastructure and not just to take it for granted is how we keep this stuff moving forward and, okay, the who's all of us, I think, not just law preserving, but even as plain old citizens, um, to raise the question.
You know, there and water, all those things are so, I mean, ultimately important to every individual. I think we have to put a lot of emphasis on protecting that source.
All right, hold on.
Wait.
Oh, okay.
I had two things. My second thing is just going back to the fancy meters, the newer. Could we kind of get something for you showing how we could move forward with that?
Yes.
How we're gonna talk about it at a council meeting and what we need to know to help make that decision.
And I regret throwing out a number because...
If you throw out a number, it's ten million.
At this point, I, you know, the number's important, but it looks like there's other reasons for doing it besides just looking at the cost.
We'll include that with the evaluation that we have of the, and, and the possibilities to have.
I think as much as we can educate the residents and the consumers of the water on how to look for if your water bill is going up. I think that's so important because I think there's a lot of people who want to do it, just are not aware of how to do it.
Yeah, that, that billing thing where it says, if it's, if it's on auto pay. And she asked me, she goes, do you wanna set it? I was like, set what? The limit of what it will take for your month in case you have a leak. I was like, that's brilliant. So, so, maybe there's more, like, six out of twelve here didn't know. Maybe that's a really good thing to just do, you know, as a way to say, hey, wait a second. You, you really should, you know, because I think you provided us with the daily consumption of a family of whatever is around this much, you know, so.
I, I, truth, I actually, don't want you to do this, but I actually created an Excel spreadsheet comparing everyone. Of course, and I see how it changes and the, so, uh, we had Britt's son living with us for about a year. He loves his showers, like, two or three a day and he has since moved, thankfully. And all the water bills dropped fifteen dollars a month and he moved down. So, oh, what I would say was the electric meter is a smart meter. I don't know if you've looked online, you can see your daily usage of electricity and that's not likely to spike like that. But I would think if you could look at it and see, oh my gosh, what happened here, I think people would...
Well, I know, maybe we didn't have to pay anything, we were gone for three weeks.
Can we do this all the time?
Lucky. So as we move into sewer, we wanna begin with, uh, testing and then, uh, move into what I think is the more aha moment. So, uh, Stephanie, do you have any testing?
Well, where we are in time is, um, we're gonna go, we're, DEQ is issuing us an up... Oh, okay. So we're under a permit, national, oh, what is it? Um, pollution discharge elimination permit, FDS permit by the state, which is through the EPA. The state administers, administers as a permit to treat and dis, well, basically to discharge our wastewater back from to the creek. The limits of what we can, the constituents of what has, what needs to be in that water is a list of everything, you know, that's contamin, known contaminants, um, that are currently regulated by DEQ. Where we are as a state, DEQ is very, very behind in administering updated NPDs permits, all statewide. So, um, we're operating under a permit from oh seven that's been extended, of course. And right now we're negotiating our new permit. So the reason it's the negotiation is because in order to do this, we went and studied the, what we call a mixing zone. So we discharged Schooner Creek. Unfortunately for us, Schooner Creek can get some very low flows toward the mouth there. Very wide area. So the point of it was we discharge, there's not a lot of mixing, a lot, a lot of flow, especially when there's, when the tide's out, to really, um, not influence what's already in the creek. So they set these limits and currently we, um, in, in low flows, we've been testing for these. So we know what we're, what we're getting, our treatment is getting us. Currently, we're not able to consistently say, yes, go ahead and issue us a permit for these limits because we certainly don't want to ever be in violation of a permit. So we're close and we're focused on copper, temperature, bacteria. And while we're, while this is all coming into play, new constituents are coming down the pipeline. So now at zinc, which just like two weeks ago, a week ago, we just got notice that zinc's gonna be part of it too. So what we're doing right now, because we, DEQ again, doesn't wanna issue us a permit with limits that we can't meet. The temperature we're talking about is less, is at half a degree Celsius. We're close, I'm not saying we're, you know, but you don't need it, you don't need it. Half a degree is a half degree, you don't need it. So we're looking at a compliance schedule and I think that's the memo that you guys got attached in the packet. Rather than build a chiller, for example, to meet, and a big huge filter to filter all the copper and stuff, we're looking at a compliance schedule of ways to improve the condition so that these, these limits can be met in the future. And as you improve your infrastructure, as you grow, um, as you implement changes, those changes are gonna go toward meeting these, you know, new, um, limits. For example, temperature's an easy one to understand. We're just a little bit too warm in high summer, in, in August and September. Again, half a degree Celsius average. So we can do other things to help improve the overall health and coolness of the stream rather than build an outfall to the ocean or build, again, chillers or some elaborate cooling system. It's not that easy to get a half a degree cool. Once we're at our discharge point, you've got to, it's, it's a lot of water to try to, to, to reduce the temperature.
In the, in the little bit of mixing zone?
In the tiny, yes.
That's what we're, we're not saying at the plant, we're saying downstream.
When we discharge at the plant, we have an outfall pipe that goes right up to Schooner Creek. Yeah, and, and you can see where the plant is. Sometimes it's pretty low and so those are the times when we just can't quite need it because the stream is really warm.
Is it just the nature of sewage that it's warmer and it needs to be, how does that get cooled?
Uh, yeah, it is just the nature after the process. It's a, it's the temperature that it is. There's really no cooling techniques in the treatment itself. We happen to have a very low temperature because of the nature of our creek compared to other cities that go to the Tolu' up, for example.
The creek is low.
It's colder than, our, our creek water is colder than other surface streams.
The temperature, yeah, I know, it does get confusing because the temperature that we discharge is warmer than the creek needs. So it doesn't really matter what the background temperature of the creek is. DEQ has a...
Standard of standard.
Standard of in this type of a creek, at this type of a flow, your temperature should be X.
Could you, could you, could you pipe water from the water processing plant to the outflow to mix in at that moment? And as, whatever the cost is to build an outflow, I know, whatever it is to go to the ocean, whatever it is to go to Drift Creek, whatever it is to cool it, could you pipe water through and have it be piped out? You know what I mean?
Add cooler water to it?
Just add water to the outflow?
For bigger, messy dogs.
Add the, add the discharge thing, add, add discharge. Cause I know it goes down that trough or whatever, out, 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 past the lagoons, right? Or on that?
You're talking about adding potable water?
Yeah.
Yeah, you could do that.
Because, you know, my kids swim down there too, you know what I mean? We all care about that and, you know what I'm saying?
Sure.
What could it be outside? What could it be outside of whatever you're doing, you know? Obviously, it would be cool if you dumped it in 20 feet of water and it mixed right there and then find it like Drift Creek, you know what I mean? Where it's deep and whatever, but it's not, it's just not.
Right, right. I mean, anything we're talking about is somehow cooling what's coming out. Whether it's adding cooler water, whether it's chilling, which is, there are cities who do chill. But very high cost for electricity, obviously. You can send it through a cooling, like a treatment, wetlands type thing. So, you know, we're looking at with our permit is, yes, those exact questions. What's the best way to cool without, you know, harming the environment in another way? Or taking from one resource to make this one, you know, but yeah, those are, yeah.
Cause the, you know, we're, more than that, and probably more than other communities, our discharge is also our recreation area. And that's super important. And it has a very negative consequence for those who are trying to grab and clam and fish and spend time and, and all of that. And, and I know it's a difficult situation for all of us to say, you can't swim there, you can't play there, you know, it's uncomfortable, make sure you shower. We don't want those kinds of things in our recreation slash discharge. But it is that, and it, it absolutely is. And low, unfortunately, the times that it's the worst is the times that people go there the most. And that's what we're talking about.
You know, and that's why in the compliance schedule, we recommended doing things that improve the overall health of that creek. Cause it's not just our bacteria, it's, you know, the temperature and the, the pastures that it comes through before it gets so
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Right, testing the water before the water processing plant, you're gonna have things there as well. You know, now you add a mile, whatever the distance is before intake and discharge. Now you're, you're comparing those two from before the water processing and after the sewer discharge is also a thing too.
Yeah.
Stephanie, is the temperature the most challenging one on that list?
No. I don't, really, they're all challenging. They're all gonna take some look at what we can do, either mechanically or organically to get these levels lower.
The other question, I was under the impression that we had switched some time ago of reusing the, the water as we went to the ultra.
Yeah.
And so, but even, so even though we're using the water, we're, the sewer plant used to be the largest or one of the largest users of water. Now that's reduced because we use the water, recirculate it from the plant more times, but eventually it has to go out. Is that because it gets filled up with all this stuff or what? Why isn't, why isn't it self-contained and never go back to the stream?
Because the, the water that we use at the plant is for wash down, cleaning. And so we were a very high user for those purposes. But we don't use, the amount of water that we discharge is a lot higher, that, that we process is a lot higher than any amount of water we could actually use at the plant. So we've stopped using potable water for those things. We have a return pipe. But that's just a small percent of the total that we produce daily. Was that answered?
I'm sorry, I'm just curious, the, the copper and the zinc, is that naturally in the stream in
Yeah, those are natural occurring elements. So that's a part of the discussion.
Does that get controlled at the water treatment plant? Does the copper and zinc get taken out later?
Yeah, I mean, we meet our levels for drinking water standards.
So you wouldn't have more, I wouldn't think, coming out of the sewage plant, unless there's some other input?
Now you're getting into
What, people dump down the toilet?
Beyond my knowledge of what contaminants and why. So, yeah.
Batteries and pennies and
I don't want these pennies fricking down the toilet.
The next thing, the next thing we wanted to talk about was capacity.
A radiator.
So the wastewater treatment plant has a capacity of 11 million, to process 11 million gallons per day. These two, I'm gonna start here, okay? No, actually, this circle is the whole capacity. If we were to sewer all the city limits, that's how much it would affect your capacity. If we were to sewer around the lake or to accept the sewage from an organization that sewers around the lake, that would be the effect on your capacity, okay? That brings us to this, these two, which is the most important part of the discussion. During dry weather, we process 1.6 million gallons of sewage per day. During wet weather, we process 5.4 million gallons per day.
This is current?
This is current. That's this section. So what that means is that we are processing rainwater and groundwater.
So that's the INI.
That's the INI. And so when you look at your capacity, while we have great capacity to deal with what we have, this is very expensive treatment because you're treating non-sewage water. And it's taking up approximately half your capacity of your sewage treatment plant.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, Ron, you've got
Total
There's four categories and there's five colors. The bottom one, the 1.14 is looking at that one, yeah.
What am I looking at?
There was that, that one.
I was like, why aren't updated this without?
Ah, secret.
I was doing, right?
I was happy there was different colors.
That was the mystery one. But anyways, so, thank you. Helps with the discussion, doesn't change the fact. But how much you are treating of rainwater, rainwater and groundwater. So just as the city has embarked on a leak detection program, as I look at this, our main effort for the treatment plant is to deal with this. And that is to look at the rainwater that is leaking into the system. We, Stephanie and Lila and I had talked about this many times before, but I had not seen this graph to just see what the percentage is.
And because of that, that could be elevating the zinc and the copper and all those.
Coming off the streets on what's
Yeah, absolutely.
Water can come in through, water can come in through the manholes. Manholes have holes in them for venting the pipes. It could come in through the pipes. If there is a hole in the pipe, it would be
I've been hearing it's been coming through the lids the whole time. How, why are we still not capping those? That seems like an easy fix. Now I understand, I understand, you know, the weight of the thing and it could still leak in through and underneath. But rubber gaskets and whatever seems like something that we could line item and replace the sewer things. They go, okay, Ron doesn't have to say it's coming in through the manhole covers anymore. I mean, really?
Yeah, we can double check that box, there are probably still a few.
And, and, you know
Don't you also inventing, doesn't, isn't that part of the
Right, that's, yeah, but really it's where It's where the, you've got like a depression in the manhole and that's where the water's going. If it's not, if you fix it that way, then it's
Is that a result of adding lifts to the streets and not taking them down? Right, so I mean, that's, I know, and I've seen it like, as I walk, you know, you look at the street and it's, it's, has a ridge to it or a crown to it. And I wonder, you know, and then you look at the level of the sewer, the manhole cover, and it's much lower than that. So I think, you know, part of that is, we're trying to be the most efficient way of like putting layers of asphalt on. But I mean, how can we, it seems like, you know, an easier fix, you know?
Yes.
That part of it, but, and, and I didn't see any graph as far as our INI, the 5.4 million GD, the 5.4 MGD. Where is that over the last years? And, you know, the last, since, since we started our INI, or I'm sorry, since we started our leak detection for water, where is that?
Has that approved?
Correct. That would be nice, something nice to see that like, five years ago, it was 6.4 million gallons a day. You know, just that we do see that our INI, you know, burst in pipe or whatever we're using to be the most effective, that we see that and it is improving because it's a significant, you know, it matters, whatever that is.
As we, like I said, is, is, as we look, as we look at planning for the future, the testing, the two, the two significant issues that we saw were the testing and this capacity of the plant is sufficient for our growth. It's just, it's just the, it's just plugging
Up until when? Because I know we were talking about the water production is good till 2035. When, when is our, you didn't give us forecast for when would this be?
Well, so I didn't forecast, I didn't, I didn't forecast because, and
Cause we're way
Really, I'm hoping that red doesn't get any worse, see what I mean?
Well, right, well, if we're talking about UGB growth and, you know
Well, think of it this way, we can process 6 million gallons of water a day. And we can process 11 million gallons of sewage. So we have almost double the capacity.
So that's fine, so that's why, okay.
So the discussion that we had is, we have is less on this one. What we have not really given to you is, is what, and, and quite frankly, just haven't been able to put it together yet. What is, what will be the estimated total cost of, of the INI? You have a budget amount that we put in each year. My own personal feeling is that it's too low. It's something that we need to increase on, but we can come back
Like the smart, like the smart water meter, could that be a contracted like system effort? Also, I know at the plant, we have outside agencies depositing their sewage. So that isn't reflected in this either, that there's this just in the pipes, not at the plant?
That, well, that includes, that includes the subject receiving
This does?
Flow, yeah. I mean, that's a slipper.
Oh, okay.
Since you mentioned that, I'm not planning on bringing this up, but I might as well. You'll be
You're welcome.
You may be hearing it Monday. Down at the parking lot behind the, behind spaces, we have a, we have a receiving station for sewage that it is for, it was initially installed for RVs, tourists and so forth. We do have, we do have some businesses that use it that are putting, essentially it's gray water they're putting in, it's not sewage it's putting in. Scott Torrance contacted me about that. We went back to the code to make sure that the answers we were giving them was correct. That is not illegal to do. So he will probably be coming in on Monday to bring that up with you. And basically his argument is that businesses should not be allowed to dispose of that for free into our receiving station. He might even bring up that we shouldn't be doing it for tourists and like, so just be aware of that.
But isn't there, at the southeast 50th, 48th, is there another RV? Oh, I thought you said aces.
I thought you said
Oh, ace hardware, oh, I'm sorry. I was like, now, where are by the casino, what, I think the call
I know, I was like, there's water, the water that this carpet cleaner was putting in that site came from his customer or from their, you know, shop. So the cost of the sewage treatment is paid by the water bill for that source. So they're
It's not like they're coming from Tucson dumping in the heads of gallons.
Right.
Right.
So anyways, so just be aware that he, that Scott will, he says he'll probably be in on Monday to talk about it. It was not happening with the city's policy. Mayor, I'm ready to move on to the next one.
Any further questions on sewage? I, it appears we've got a target area there to work on.
Trying, trying. Okay, the next area is solid waste or trash.
Where's Tina? I saw her yesterday, I think you better
Okay, so as we look at the, as we look at the trash, solid waste, and I'm using the term solid waste specifically because trash has its own definition. But as we look at this, there, there's really a couple of things that we need to just go over with you. One is where are we as far as how much trash is generated and so forth? The next question is, where do you really want to go? Often, as we deal with trash and how it affects the, affects the environment, we're dealing with the flavor of the month. Plastic bags and straws and something else. But, but not a comprehensive look at what happens with our trash. We can follow the path of saying, whatever, whatever is the issue of the day, then we'll deal with that. And we could say, state has passed the plastic bag ban, great. That's where, that's where, that's where we need to end. Or we can look at something a little bit more comprehensive. So, so what we're really hoping to get out of this discussion today is a little bit of a sense of where you, where you really want to go as we talk about solid waste. And how far and how much you're willing to pay to get there, okay? Trash is big business, okay? It's very, very, let me rephrase that, solid waste is big business, it's very big business. And, and there's nothing that is cheap about dealing with solid waste. So first of all, I have a gift for all of you that you'll see a little bit more. These are pads of paper, okay? And we'll talk about those a little bit later, so there's one for each of you. I've got about 10 more of those in my office.
Did you make them for us?
I did. I did.
This is your scrap, is that what you're doing?
This is the city's new year old documents program.
I first started, just, so just, I first started doing this in 1980 for an employer I worked for. And I've just stuck with it ever since. And those are, these, this is paper that has just come to me. I didn't collect it from any other employer we have, it's just paper that has come to me from one reason or another. A lot of it I just scan in and then it becomes packed.
Yeah, we don't have
That's right. So let's talk a little bit about solid waste. I made sure that they're all scanned in electronically done, so they're, they're all okay. So these first sets of numbers that you're looking at comes from North Lincoln Sanitary Services. They've been tracking since 1997. Total solid waste that, that they process per year, okay?
Is that the recession?
Now what's interesting to me about it, this part from here to here, that one, about that one, is not really overly interesting to me. What's interesting to me is this trend upward that we're seeing. We're seeing that we're climbing back up, we're almost at our peak point again, and we are very much higher than where we began, okay? So that number and this trend is what is interesting to me. Now these, this graph doesn't tell me very much other than a trend. And the reason is because there's so many other variables that you have to because there's so many other variables that you have to find a way to equalize the variables. It also, it becomes interesting to know what is combined into this. This is what goes into that, so the top line was the line we were looking at, the red line is trash, the green line is recycling, and the purple line is the wood waste, and when you add those up, you get that top line. So that's why I say we're talking solid waste, not trash, because trash is just one component of your solid waste.
Wood waste is yard debris?
Yeah, no, well, no, no.
They're very specific.
Yard, a lot of yard debris is in this, this here. Wood waste is the limitations that you have on what can be taken at North Lincoln Sanitary, which is basically sticks, grass clippings, things like that, they end up in this section, okay? Now, again, trends are interesting, what's, what, what is interesting to note in this is that there is an inverse relationship between these two and trash. As this is going up, you will see those going down.
They now have, and now I don't know if it correlates, at the transfer station and outside agencies not associated with North Lincoln Sanitary who chips the wood there, so I don't know if at that point, you know, they just, you just dump it and then somebody else chips it and takes that out. So that could be, they're no longer taking it. Plus, population isn't in here either.
This is interesting because it tells me trends, but again, the problem with this, there are so many other variables to look at, so you've got to find a way to equalize it to be able to compare this year with that year, and the way to do that is to compare it per capita, okay? That's when you really start seeing what's interesting about it. This then is the total of garbage, trash, recycling and wood waste on a per capita basis. So as you can see, we are creating about three point two tons per person per year. When you compare that at our peak of two thousand seven, now the reason this doesn't go back to ninety-seven is that this corresponds with the population information that I have. As you can see, that you're about three quarters of a ton less produced now than in our very peak year, okay? So again, that trend is significant in what you're seeing as it's going up. And, and as I, and so then when you break it down even further, this is your recycling, okay? And as you can see, your recycling is decreasing. Again, this is, so it's point three five tons per year, we are almost down to our lowest point of recycling. Now, that is both a factor, people are recycling less and there's less recycle, there are less recyclable things, okay? Again, going just on my own career, when I was in ninety-one, you know, working out in Centerville, Maryland, we started the city's first recycling program, everything was recyclable. There was, there was nothing that wasn't recyclable. Ever since then, it's been dropping, 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 okay? And, and, and there's been factors to seeing that, and.
Buying in bulk too, as associated, I mean, people making lifestyle change, in addition to not recycling as well, lifestyle.
Personal choices as well, yes, very much so. That's the most dramatic effect that we've seen is in the drop of our wood waste. Now, we don't have a pickup on wood waste, this is the, they will be willing to pick it up, they will pay for their pickup or you take it down to their receiving station. But as you can see, this trend is pretty significant as we see a drop in it. That again, some of that is a result of less things being able to be counted in wood waste, so they're no longer, they, they don't accept it, or changes in personal behavior. And as I mentioned, there's an inverse relationship associated with these, and so that's why you're seeing your garbage or your trash is going up, okay? And so again, you're looking at, on trash alone, we are reaching the point of our highest, our highest amount of trash that we generate. That's a little bit about where we, where we are. Oh, and final, final slide that I have, this is the customer counts. Our lowest fee that anybody pays per month is eight dollars and five cents, these are all residential, these are non-commercial. That, and one person has that, the highest that somebody pays is ninety-five dollars and forty-two cents, and, and there's one person who pays that, the largest number.
Is this residential only or residential?
This is residential only. The largest number is twenty dollars and fifty cents, fifty-seven cents a month, nine hundred and forty-five customers have that. This is, this would be for both trash and recycling pickup, they don't separate those out. The, the average is, is about twenty-one dollars, the median is right in between these two, it's really twenty fifty-seven is the median. So that's the breakdown of where your customers are, how much they are paying. All of these different fees are based upon the level of services that you're receiving North Lincoln Sanitary provides. What most people use is one roll-off that comes out, they have them in three different sizes, thirty-two, sixty-four, ninety-six gallons, you can have them, you roll it out to your curb and have them pick it up, or they'll come into your garage area and pick them up for you, and whatever level of service, that's why you have so many different fees is, whatever level of service you want, your fees are based upon that.
Okay. Did your solid waste graph before that, was that residential?
All of those are residential. I did not put any commercial into this.
Running speculating on the previous slides of the wood, this one, since it's declining, that is, you know, where is the wood that they used to recycle or took, where is that going, in the garbage?
In the garbage, that's the biggest, yeah, I talked with Tina a little bit about this and she, she, we discussed the fact that the way you recycle wood waste, or process the wood waste, does reduce the amount, and then, and so those things are now just going in the trash your hands.
Okay.
If it doesn't make it in there, it's going to the trash can. So that gives, that's a little bit of the picture of where we are. We spent about eight hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, or North Lincoln Sanitary does, in tipping fees, or the fees that are paid to Coffin Butte. Coffin Butte has, there's two parts to their, their mountain they're creating. If you haven't had the chance to go there, you should, it's a fascinating experience. On the west side is the big mountain, and that's the landfill. On the east side is their compost, and we currently do not have a, any kind of requirements or composting other than just people's personal behavior. Now, so the next thing that I wanted to, to show you before we really get into a discussion as to where you really want to go, is a little bit about how you get to wherever it is that you want to go. There's really, there's, there's two ends to the spectrum, and the videos, the two videos that I'm going to show you deal with these. One is through regulation, best example of that, all of, everything about solid waste is behavior, okay? It's all about behavior. And changing behavior is the way that you deal with whatever it is your goal is. You can regulate it, good example of that is the state, just seen the plastic bag ban, that regulates it. The second is, the second is through personal initiative and, and people doing, doing it on their own, often almost education by, by the city. Okay, so let me just show you these, this first video is of San Francisco, which has a goal of zero waste by twenty twenty.
Did you know that the urban waste produced from cities around the world is enough to fill a line of garbage trucks stretching more than thirty-one hundred miles? That's a distance from Florida to Washington every day, and things are only expected to get worse. Thankfully, some cities such as San Francisco are paving the way and trying to change the way we think about trash.
San Francisco plans to become zero waste by twenty twenty, which is a pretty ambitious but awesome goal, and this is the main nerve center for all of the city's recyclables. This is where everything ends up to be sorted and awesome. What is zero waste?
An idea, and it means sending next to nothing to landfills or incinerators.
In two thousand nine, the city passed a law requiring residents and businesses to sort their waste into recyclables, compostables and landfill trash. Recology is the private company that handles it all.
When I started at Recology twenty-three years ago, the recycling rate was around thirty-eight percent. Today, we've more than doubled that.
So far, San Francisco has diverted eighty percent of its waste away from landfills, and its success has been getting global attention.
Government representatives from all over the world visit this facility to learn about how they might be able to replicate what's being done here.
What is the current method of waste management or recycling in your town?
What we have a lot of in Denmark is actually incineration, where you burn the waste.
Do you think that you might implement some of what you've learned here?
One thing that we have heard a lot is the value of composting, we don't do that a lot, so maybe we will go home and do more composting.
San Francisco now collects six hundred and fifty tons of food scraps, yard trimmings and other organic waste every day. That material is brought here to be turned into compost.
This is one of the most modern composting facilities in North America.
Okay, so you can see a bunch of stuff here that people have thrown away, mostly wood here, a shoe, this flip-flop.
Yeah, there's that.
Why would it have shoes?
Well, there's seven billion people on the planet, so there's a lot of shoes. We're in a culture here in California where people are moving very quickly, and so people make mistakes, so we get the, the things that are not supposed to be here, we get them removed right away, right at the beginning.
After the waste is ground up and screened for plastic and other bits of trash, the organic matter left over gets watered and aerated. Piping system that filters out dangerous greenhouse gases produced by microbes. In about sixty days, the compost is complete and sold to local organic farmers and vineyards.
How does composting help the environment?
Composting keeps materials out of landfills, it returns nutrients to farms, it reduces the production of very potent greenhouse gases, it attracts and retains water, like rainwater.
I mean, it smells like hell, but it's actually very beautiful what you're describing here, you know, people's food scraps, which might otherwise be waste, comes here to essentially feed these farms that produce new crops.
Well, from this facility, more than three hundred vineyards have received the compost and applied it to their vineyard. Farmers are using the compost to grow cover crops that pull carbon out of the atmosphere and return carbon back to the soil. This is one of the best things we can do in an effort to slow down climate change. People have really heard a lot about environmental problems, they want to hear now a lot more about environmental issues.
How much recycling and composting is there in your town? Let us know in the comments below.
Now, what's interesting about this one, I'm sure this is a component of it, but they don't discuss it. Everything in this one deals with what do you do with the trash after it's been created? It never deals with how to not create trash to begin with. So I gave you these pads as an example, that, the pads are an example of just what they're talking about. I have made a second use for paper, but never discussed the issue of how do I not make paper in the first place, okay? By the way, you'll notice that I have not brought a pen or paper with me, and everything's just being done electronically. So the second video that I'm going to show you deals with how to not generate trash in the first place. This is a woman by the name of Laura Singer, who runs a blog and now businesses, they're all associated with this.
The average American produces four point three pounds of trash a day, that's almost sixteen hundred pounds a year, but if we took some simple steps, we could go off the trash grid and minimize thousands of pounds of waste into just a single jar.
So this is my trash truck.
Two years of trash in this tiny little jar.
Yep.
That's crazy. I mean, I've probably produced twenty times this much in a day.
Yeah, this is everything basically that I couldn't compost or couldn't recycle or couldn't figure out what to do with.
Where did you get this idea to become zero waste?
Um, it kind of all started when I was a senior at NYU studying environmental studies, and one day after class, I went home to make dinner and I opened my fridge and I saw that everything in there was packaged in plastic, and I felt like such a hypocrite, we're supposed to be saving the planet, and here you are making all of this trash. I feel like it's really important to live your values, and my values are having a really low environmental impact, I have to live like I want that, and so that's why I decided to change my lifestyle.
What was the easiest part about reducing your waste?
I think it was just like seeing that I didn't have to do that much to produce very little waste, and by composting and buying bulk, I essentially eliminated eighty percent of my waste. By packaging means needing to have containers to pack things that hold through your hands. For instance, like I buy bulk olive oil, so I bring a decent jar to fill it up, I'll pick up some beer from a local shop that sells it in growlers that are actually reusable, so that's like a totally waste-free way to drink.
I imagine you get asked a lot of questions about how do you do this? I've been curious about a few things, someone throw a few questions to you.
Plastic toothbrushes?
I use a compostable bamboo toothbrush.
Sponges?
I use a compostable dish brush.
Paper towels?
Cotton napkins.
Plastic hoodware?
Wood or stainless steel utensils.
Cotton balls?
reusable cotton rounds.
Dryer sheets?
Dryer balls that I make myself.
What about shampoo?
Old castiel soap.
Makeup?
Organic vegan makeup in recyclable packaging.
Bunden products?
Menstrual cup.
Gifra?
Why? Yes. So we're going to mix two tablespoons of organic coconut oil, and then the tablespoon of baking soda, and then about twenty drops of the organic peppermint oil.
So this is how you make your toothpaste?
Mm-hmm.
What's your teeth? They look very nice.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking about this.
They haven't gotten mad at me yet, so I'll just take this spoon and scoop it on tonight, toothbrush.
It's not bad, it's actually kind of salty.
Yeah, that's the bacon product.
Yeah, my teeth really do go.
Thank you.
So do you have any garbage cans in your home here?
No, I don't have any garbage cans in my home.
Because you don't have garbage?
Exactly.
It really does compel me to want to try and reduce my waste, so what, what tips can you give me or somebody else that wants to do that as well?
Yeah, I would suggest, you know, look in your garbage can and see what your garbage is, and until you do that, you don't really know what you're reducing, right? Step two, using a reusable bag instead of a plastic or paper bag, just like easy one-time changes. And then the last one would be to actually make your products yourself, so learn how to make toothpaste, learn how to make deodorant, it's a really fun thing to do.
What is your ultimate goal?
Before I lived my lifestyle, I wondered, you know, why is there all this trash and why is that okay? And we have to find solutions before it gets out of control. I've never told anyone, oh, you should live this lifestyle, or you can actually live this way, I kind of just leave my lifestyle, put it out there and see what happens.
Be sure to check out another episode of Going Off Court.
Okay, so the, well, a bit extreme for my taste. It does show a very good point, that when you look at what governments are doing, when you look at what governments are doing, there's generally two approaches, how to deal with the trash that is being created, and the second is how not to create trash in the first place, okay? So what I'm really kind of hoping to get from you is, where do you want to go now that, now that the state has done the plastic bag ban? What do you do, what does the? What does the city do from here? And how far do you want to go? And how do you want to get there? Give you an example of just what your city staff is doing. As you know, and as I've shown you, this white paper is a big deal for me. It just bugs me that we are generating so much white paper. So I've asked our staff, how do we reduce the amount of white paper we use by twenty percent? Okay? And I've had some really good suggestions. The first one is that we're implementing is that I signed hundreds of documents that are purchase orders, that are travel vouchers, and one of the suggestions that came back was, why are you doing that on paper? Why don't you do that through a PDF document? Makes an awful lot of sense. So anyway, so that's why I'm going to just turn it over to you for a discussion on where do you really want to go? Do you want to just deal with what is coming up? Because tomorrow, today was plastic bags, tomorrow there will be something else. Do you want to try to take a more holistic approach and say, where do we actually want to end up? And then the next question is, what is the extent at which you want to do it? And then the final thing is, do we do it through regulation? Do we do it through education? Or do we do it through a combination of both?
Before I get started with that, I just want to say in the latest Sierra magazine, there's an article that print went out for you. It's on paper, and I'm so sorry. My packet is on paper because I pushed print and I only wanted the agenda, and it just- I stopped it, and it stopped, and then next time I turned on my laptop, it's finished printing. Sometimes you can't help yourself. But anyway, there's an article in the magazine that is saying a lot of what you've just said about how it's not just recycling, it's the other options we have available. And the interesting part to me is that it was, it's from an Oregon DEQ staff person, so that's kind of nice to get it in that circulation as big as the Sierra magazine. I've asked the question about, is it recycling or is it really something more to actually get at the actual footprint? That's what we're talking about. I'll give you a copy.
Thank you.
On paper?
I'll scan it.
Then you'll get it back. I like Riley's idea of attacking styrofoam.
Yeah, please, styrofoam might be my plus.
Yeah, there's a lot going on, but for sure styrofoam is probably, you know, one of the most atrocious. Now, I know there's Agilix Industries, you know, it's, so as you try to get the habit there, you know, it takes time, but there's a place in Tiger that will turn styrofoam into fuel.
Let me mention something about that. I was at a meeting, and up in Tillamook, I think it's the middle school kids, took it upon themselves to gather all the styrofoam in town, and they shrunk it to Tiger because they get money for it, rather than using the hauling system.
Right. And before it goes to zero styrofoam, we could maybe do something like that.
Yeah, and the cost is getting it there, but the school kids are making a ton of money for that purpose.
Well, could we get a recyclable styrofoam place that everybody can throw in?
They're too expensive, very expensive. And the closest one isn't Tiger. I'm sure there'll be more eventually, because Tina's even talked about that at our SWAC meetings, the cost of getting one. But is she here?
Hi.
Do you want to come up? Do you want to come to us?
Hey, do you want me to? I can.
And before we go into that, I'd like to inject a thought about composting, because I'm one of those people who's, two years ago, Tina Weldon, she was, oh yeah, here's a composting bucket. So I put it in my backyard two years ago, and I swear it's going down to bedrock because I thought it was up to my nose and now it's down to my shoulder. But I've been putting this composting in for two years, and now I have this two years of slushy compost. I don't know what the heck to do with it, because it just keeps growing into slushy compost. And then I have a rental in another state, and they have composting at the curb, and it's so much more convenient to have composting throughout the city. So that's my two cents.
I think that it needs to be from the city. If this is going to be serious, I think city functions, city buildings, city things should have, if we go to composting or curbside composting or what have you, they need to begin with the city itself to then have the people, you know, you create the habit by making it a part of your job, and then it can trickle out that way. And if we say, let's do curbside composting, but, you know, at city events, there isn't a recycling, a garbage, a compost, those things available. Those don't exist on the street. It's just that we don't even have recycling on the street containers. You know, we're not set up to have that habit become the background to then, oh, that's just what we do. Because we're trying to push something that's foreign on them. It needs to be just around and available, and it does cost, there will be a cost to us, but, you know, her tipping costs are going to be different if we have curbside composting. And if, I don't know, if Northern Sanitary could make money from composting, I don't know. But that way, there's going to be a split there, and there'll be lower tipping fees, but composting, and there's value in composting. I mean, it's, you know, I'm sure you know, but, I mean, it's going to be, right now, everything.
Let me throw out, challenge a little bit of ideas that I'm hearing, starting with composting. Why compost? Of anything that is going into the landfill, that's going to go away. Plastic won't. Styrofoam will. Compost will. If I throw my food waste into the trash, it goes out to the landfill, it's going to go away. Why compost? What is it about compost that makes you want to now have another curbside service versus something else?
It's bigger than putting it in the dump, and if you go, there's value in that food waste. And holistically, for the soul, you're going to be putting this garbage, it's not, it isn't garbage. Plastic is garbage, you know what I mean? In those people's minds, and there's value in that. So the people that I'm talking to want that ability to know that their waste isn't adding more waste, but it's being reused, and it's being- Is there a savings at the city compost versus shipping it off to some landfill?
So just some statistics. If we were to do a compost program, the tipping fee is slightly more than landfill. Per volume, per, by weight, the state says that forty percent of the volume by weight in a residential garbage can is yard debris, food compost. So if you're looking to increase your recovery numbers, which is what the state mandates you to do, that is by far the lowest hanging fruit. It is, you're looking at, and I, these are broad numbers, but for instance, Newport's program was seven dollars and fifty cents per person. I think they're pretty close, and they've had it for two years, so the numbers are going to sway one way or the other with the tipping fee and so on and so forth. Toledo and Walport just instituted their program, and I think that they were more in the five-dollar range because they would do it how I would suggest if we were to do it, where we alternate it with the recycling every other week.
Can I inject something there to you?
Yes.
Could you come up closer? Because the recording will pick you up.
Oh, gotcha.
And say who you want to.
Walport, with Walport, dull disposal, they were able to do it really cheap because they were doing weekly recycling. So they already had the truck, already had the driver, and they instituted every other week recycling, and then opposite that, compost. So their only cost really was the roll carts for the compost. So, but if you're looking at, we're already doing every other week recycling, so we would, for us, it would require new equipment and a driver, and then, you know, something to transport it to the compost.
And that's neither here nor there. We don't need to get into the weeds on that. But, so that's compost. And there's two different thoughts out there on, nothing should go to the landfill that we have someplace else to put it. And then there's another thought that's like, that's why we build landfills, is to have a space to put things that either don't create value monetarily or environmentally. And there's arguments out there on both sides of this, and just being full disclosure that, and I happen to be in this boat a little bit. In landfills, we capture methane, and we burn it and create electricity in. Across the street where the compost goes, it gets dumped on an asphalt pad, ground, and put into rows, and it's composted, and that's a very typical way to compost. But all of that methane is not being captured, and so I have an issue with that. California has an issue with that. You can no longer, according to their legislature, compost outside. So now they're building these multimillion-dollar buildings and composting inside, and it's like working in the seventh layer of hell inside of that building, because it's steamy, and it's dark, and it's nasty, and I was appalled that they could find a human being to do that. Anyhow, so, I mean, there's two thoughts there, and whichever way you decide to go, that's your decision.
Composting greatly captures carbon, as opposed to when you apply it to land, it has exponent, you know, it's very much more carbon capturing than methane-producing energy that way. So it's, one, you're creating energy, one, you're pulling carbon down. So, I mean, there is a difference between the two as well. What eventually happens to the composted material, is it go to farms or something?
Well, so that's the other issue, is that Oregon right now is a little bit on the too much surplus of compost. So, I mean, Miracle Grow that you buy at Buy Mart is stuff that comes straight from, PRC is the name of the composting facility. If we were to do a program, that's where it would go. And they sell to Miracle Grow. But some of it goes to Junction City, to JC Fuels, to be turned into fuel. And, you know, there's just all of those things. Agilix is very interesting, but in a real market, they don't exist. They only exist off of grants and tax credits and so on and so forth. So it would, and I think this is where Ron really has you guys on the right track of thinking big picture, because you don't want to start a styrofoam collection program that next year, when there's no grant money, now you have these kids collecting styrofoam, where does it go? Oh, sorry, kids, we have to haul it to the landfill because that program dried up from the grant funds. I think those things for education purposes are very important, and that's something Diane has been, you guys are very fortunate, she has been very involved in the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, and-
Judy, Judy.
Judy, sorry. Looking at Diane. But she knows what the goals are of the county as a whole, and when I say the county, I don't mean Lincoln County, I mean our county. But I think that her goals are on track. She has, you know, she wants to get people in green schools because we have to start with our kids. And then, you know, start some programs, like a styrofoam collection program is a great project for kids because it's measurable, they can touch it, you know, they can see they're making a difference. But I think you have to be careful about, like, doing a citywide styrofoam collection.
Personally, personally, I'd rather see a ban.
Man.
Well, whatever it is.
I'm just, I'm just, no, there has to be the educational element, and that'll come out after we decide what direction we want to go. But I would also like to see a ban on the-
Right, the collection would be until the ban is in effect, in one theory.
But I think the bigger picture is what is it you're trying to do? What is the goal? Is the goal to reduce the weight of the average garbage can? Is the goal to, you know, have more pounds of recycling? I mean, that's what you really need to figure out. And then you start plugging the holes with whatever it is you choose to do. Ban, collection programs, education, and that's-
Yeah, and why this is such an issue is that when I was in Maryland, the goal was simple. Landfills are too expensive to create, and so they wanted to preserve the landfill for as long as possible. That was why they started recycling. Had nothing to do with rescuing the environment. It was total financial, okay? It was total cost. Here, there seems to be more of a sense of what we need to do is to do something that will have a preservation on the environment. And it's rare that I ever hear people even bring up something like costs of landfills and things like that. And so, for me, starting with the end in mind is really important, because that will then guide all of your decisions. Because I was going to ask, the next question I was going to ask is, why styrofoam? What makes styrofoam special instead of plastic pens, or plastic straws, or something else? Matter of fact, I mentioned before we even started that I got a copy of an email that was sent to me that said, let's ban everything that is disposable plastic. Well, that's about three-quarters of what's in this room, these tables, these pens, these computers, this pair of glasses. And so, again, for me, what really is important is knowing where you want to go. And if you don't know where to go, where you want to go, that's okay. That's the purpose of the whole discussion.
I kind of think that if we are looking at a ban, even for discussion's sake, and we look at plastics, I think the thing would be that the things that are easily replicated in another way that are compostable, or that can go, you know, that will break down over time. And we know plastic doesn't. And I mean, even those, the reusable bags that biodegrade over a while, do they really totally degrade, or do they end up those little pieces of plastic that we find on the beach? So, I mean, because of where we live, too, that might help form how we, what types of plastics would be.
So just one quick little thing, sorry, Diane, one quick thing. Biodegradable products?
Diana or Diane?
Diana.
Diane.
I'm sorry.
Diane.
Right. I meant to, I'm interrupting you, sorry. Most of those products do not, cannot go into a compost program, like biodegradable plastics. They don't break down.
So see, that's something that we need to know.
Now, do they break down eventually? Yes.
But like the compostable silverware that, you know, you see in a lot of reports and stuff now, those cannot go into a yard debris collection program, compost collection bin.
Because they say it, but it's really-
Right, because they're made for systems like in California that have high pressure and heat, and the type of composting we do in the state of Oregon, they, they're-
But even so, if it goes into the trash, I mean, if you throw it in your trash bin, then it'll eventually decompose and all that, where plastic won't. So there's still benefit.
And so, the other thing about plastic is, the reason why we like it is because it doesn't break down.
So there's no leachate, no escape?
No, I'm saying as you use the product, it doesn't, so like your plastic bag, or your plastic whatever that's holding water, is nice because three years later, it still holds water. It hasn't broken down, it's not unstable. And so when you start thinking about, well, let's ban this, well, then what are you going to replace it with that will do that job? Well, nobody's talking about banning plastic junk. No, no, I'm, no, I'm just saying, in the big picture thing, so, you've got to realize why you like the product is because it's stable.
You can trade it out, because the disposable, the one-time-use, like bottles of water, you can buy a better plastic that you can use for a long, long time, and so then we're not having that other, less-
For me, it's single-use, single-use plastics and restaurant, okay, and eateries. Not, I'm not, we're not to the point of Vic razors. The people that I talk to is single-use plastics in restaurant and food eateries. It's plastic bans, plastic bags, even in grocery circumstances and restaurants. So increasing the plastic ban, that's, I'll just say what it's, I'm talking about. Plastic bags in all capacities, single-use plastics in restaurants, a styrofoam ban, and curbside composting for the effect of there's value to those people who are interested and want that, another life for that composting product. I understand it could benefit the Northern Sanitary and those tipping, or whatever, you know, from before, that a lot of the weight is that food waste. And we have a ton of eateries here and restaurants, and there could be, you know-
There's not a benefit, I don't know what you mean by benefit.
Cost benefit.
For the ratepayer, it is a net increase in their cost, because you're just shifting pounds.
Right, you're saying between seven and five dollars.
Right, so now we're going to have three roll carts at the curb, and let's pretend that each of those roll carts represents a cost per pound, just like green beans. Those roll carts are different cost per pound, so you're not, and they're all expensive. I mean, unfortunately, in the days of making money on one of those roll carts is now, we're paying almost triple for one of them. And that's fine, because there's, you know, the cost benefit is not necessarily just the net income or loss. But, so we're just moving pounds from one roll cart to the other now. But, so we're just moving pounds from one roll cart to the other now. Wherever you choose to put those pounds is up to you and, and to the consumer, because you're making the, the choice for the consumer.
Let me say, there's value to the person in the compost bin versus the trash bin.
Yeah, because they find, they, they like knowing better that that, those pounds are not going to the landfill.
Right, and it, and if it's whatever the price is, it's okay because composting is difficult for some people and it's, it's challenging.
Well, it's hard in our community, we have no burn ban, or we do have a burn ban. You can't burn, so it is really difficult.
How are you gonna compost in an apartment? How are you gonna compost, you know, that percentage? And so you have all those people that would like to do that and so.
Ron touched on something I think that's really important that drives a lot of this discussion when you start looking at other states and what they're doing. And I, I've talked to Judy about this is landfill tip fees drive a lot of things. If you have cheap landfill tip fees, which Oregon has historically some of the cheapest landfill costs in the nation, it, it is more difficult to institute other programs. You go to California, Maryland, Washington has low tip fees because they use Oregon landfills, but.
We have a lot of space.
Well, we have a lot of space and, but expensive tip fees, like Ron was saying, like, we don't have space to do anything else with this landfill or make it big enough to, to.
In Maryland.
Then all of a sudden, you start looking at other programs. And if it's 200 bucks a ton to do that other program, who cares? Because you have, you have to get that, you have to divert that tonnage. So that, that drives a lot of things. So when we start looking at, you know, I know Judy brought back stuff from California, I think, and it's like, you can do a lot of stuff when your landfill rate is $300 a ton.
Right, right. And we're not there yet.
I have a quick question. We always talk about plastics and stuff, what about clothes? Do clothes, are they biodegradable or do they? I mean, there's a lot of clothes thrown away every day. And I'm like, I just thought about that, I say.
That cotton and wool, I mean, natural fibers will biodegrade. Polyester is no different than a plastic bottle. I mean, a lot of our, a lot of our polar fleece and stuff is made out of PET.
Right.
So it, it's not.
So that goes to the landfill and just sits there? Okay. So there's another thing to take about.
So Ron, you tried to direct us to, you know, deal with what creates trash or, you know, before it becomes trash or after. And it seems a discussion with, you know, like the shiny object still. We saw the San Francisco video, here's Boise aims to move past recycling to zero waste. It appeared, big picture. So they've chosen to deal with trash before it becomes trash. I also find the discussion, I understand the emotion, but I'm sitting here thinking, gee, we raised the water rate 50 cents and all hell breaks loose. I can imagine a $7 a month composting bill so that we feel good.
If it's optional.
But composting, my concern is.
But again, you know, um, you know, if you're gonna deal with behavior, you know, you, you want everyone to participate in, you know, banning plastic type thing or, you know, moving to compost. So I'm, I'm just suggesting, you know, think beyond just your, you know, noisy group who's whispering in your ear or whatever, because you'll hear, you know, the cost element of, of whatever, you know, whether it's actual dollars or behavioral change or, and then you'll, you'll hear about the impact. And I've been chuckling as people talk about the plastic bag. You know, they really, at the end of the day, they just want to see something done. It's not, in my opinion, it's not really the plastic bag. It's please do something, add to the list of communities. Even when we were waiting, consciously waiting for the state to take action so everybody would participate and we wouldn't be adversely affected as a community. So I, I guess I'm, I'm leaning on a bigger picture and saying, it's also a marketing opportunity. You know, what if you join, you know, Boise and San Francisco and, oh, the naked trash? You know, it's just the fringes that you're gonna adversely affect.
They're just gonna put it to the ratepayers.
I'll be at every event out there, sorry for your trash cans.
You know, I just, otherwise we're gonna be chasing the shiny object.
Mayor, can I add a little bit to that? One of the things that fascinated me as I have studied over the years, um, that I rarely ever see happen, but it always, but it seems to be, as we're talking about, the aha moments, that anybody who changes their behavior has an aha moment. We saw that with Lauren Singer, we just saw in the video. She opened up her, her kitchen, she's studying environmental studies. She opened up her refrigerator and looked in and saw how many prepackaged things there were. I was in Walmart the other day, you know, you cannot buy fruit in Walmart that's not prepackaged. You can't go to buy, um, strawberries or blueberries. You can get melons and bananas, but you can't buy those other things. One of the ideas that, uh, that is an interesting, is an interesting thing to do is to have, um, an audit in somebody's home. She talked about go through your trash. Now, I can go through my trash, but I may not know what to do once I look at it from the kitchen floor.
Great.
But I could have somebody that's a, that is an expert in this come in, um, and the city could sponsor somebody and review that with me and help me learn how to change my own behaviors to reduce the amount of trash.
You wanna start at my house?
Also, you guys, I got mason jars in every cabinet. I mean, I built cabinets to hold mason jars and I buy in bulk. And that's the purpose of that is because when I, I only want plastic in my garbage can. That's it. I don't wanna put all that stuff, me personally. You know what I mean? And you do shop differently because of where you go. I mean, you, you, I don't go to Walmart because you can't buy those things, you know what I mean? And without packaging, you know? You know what, don't get me wrong, I'm butter grip. But I'm just saying, you know, you, you know, you have to change your behavior to, 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 to do that.
Yeah, I recently bought some of those, um, little, um, bags, reusable bags with different vegetables can go in different ones. I don't use the plastic.
There is a, there is a cost to, to when you go to recycling like that. And I think of the people who are ready or on the low spectrum of income. If, if education, I think, is so important. If we could keep educating people on how to do things. And I know that it's hard to get people out of their house, but, I mean, now that I'm retired, I'm learning all these things. Otherwise, people who work just are fast food, just whatever's easy, let's do it. But if we can continue to offer classes on education, like composting, now it's another one. I mean, now I use my, um, coffee grounds for my plants. I'm just excited, I have to share. I ate my own salad last night. So, I mean, those are steps that we take. But I think we still talk to the people who are working 40, 50 hour weeks and don't really stop to think about that.
Or you talk to the ones that are working 40, 50 hours a week and are doing that. And saying, hey, I do work 40, 50 hours a week and I can do this and it isn't so expensive that you can't afford it and I have it.
But it's educating them.
I'd say, what are we educating them to? We just have to, I think, need to figure out what our big picture goal is and then we can figure out.
Yeah, you can just sit around a table all day long and say, oh, I replaced my produce bags. That does not do anything to set a city on a course of what is our, because, I'm gonna be completely honest with you, if you're after tonnage, produce bags are not gonna get you there. Are, are you after tonnage? Are you after measurable things? What, what is it that you want to do? Because you will sit around for hundreds of hours and have your little stories about mason jars and produce bags, but you've done nothing.
No, these are.
Well, I don't know, I would disagree with about doing nothing, but.
But I mean.
I hear what you're saying.
Policies why you haven't done anything. And, and our job as, as community leaders is to set policies for our community to send it in the direction we want it to go.
If we don't have this discussion about kind of what we're doing on our own and how we're doing it, it's hard to form that bigger picture because then together we're all doing different things. And together we're all kind of getting to a place, well, maybe we're not worried about tonnage. Maybe we're worried about other, a bigger picture.
I guess that's what I'm after is, are you after measurable things that, that you as a city can say, we have reduced our waste by X numbers of ton?
Well, that depends on what waste is. Now, if you're saying part of it's going to composting, you, one person could say we have reduced our waste because some of it's gone to that. But if you look at total tonnage, it isn't gonna change that way.
No, it's not gonna change.
That's what I mean. So, but, but one person could say, I have reduced my waste by 40% because my food waste is being composted. So there's that difference on that as well.
Let me just throw in one other thing that, uh, people believe in big things, but they act on small things, right? They act on how it affects them personally. So as, as we have talked about, uh, what is our overall accomplishment, there's the city, uh, then there's the individual or the, or the household. The most measurable thing there is, is how much stuff is going in there, okay? Into that trash can. If I can reduce the amount of garbage that I'm, that I am collecting, then, sorry, Tina, I apologize for this, but then I don't have to pay as much money. Okay? So when I'm talking about the global thing that we want to do, extend the life of landfills, protect our oceans, protect our beaches, whatever it may be, that's what I'm thinking of as a city official. As a personal thing, that's what I'm thinking about. How do I, how do I pay Tina and Lonnie less by not generating so much trash? And if that means I have an alternative for yard waste, um, and it's cheaper to do that, and it means I don't have to have as many pickups in the summertime because I'm putting all my lawn clippings in there, then that's what I'm gonna be interested in. If it is, uh, and if that happens to correspond with my own personal beliefs that I need to do something good for the environment, but for the tangible part of it, we'll have our own big goals, but the individual one that I, that I always come back to when I talk to people is that right there. How do I generate less so I don't have to pay as much?
If you have a small, if you, what are the three sizes of garbage?
Thirty-two, sixty-four, ninety-six.
So if you're at the middle one, because you're putting your food waste, and then go to the little one and then have a composting one. So the difference between the small and the medium is less than the cost of composting, then yes, that is a savings to me.
Well, and the other thing to consider too is that that yard waste is going somewhere. You're paying to get rid of it somewhere, whether your landscaper's taking it and charging you for it, whatever. I mean, it's, it's there. We're not putting it in a separate can right now, but what's the cost of, of that? What, what's happening to it? Because it's not getting burned. So it's either going to the woods or it's going to the transfer station.
Or if I have generated less other trash, so there's more room in my can for yard waste, then it's, people will do what is in their own best interest. And to me, it all comes back to, on an individual basis, a household basis, it all comes back to this. How do I reduce the cost I have of generating trash?
I, I don't think cost is what's driving a lot of people though. I really don't believe, they're like, oh my God, I'm paying so much for garbage, what am I gonna do? That is not how it's coming to me. That is not, anybody has come to me and saying, I'm paying too much for garbage, let's do something else. It isn't that. It's, there's another value, there's another use, there's, there's more that it can be done with what I'm producing. And when you have that, holistically, you change and like, oh, well, I could buy in bulk and I could do this. You have to start with something and.
There are definitely two camps and, and I think that you're both being honest, but there are, because when recycling changed in, in September of eight seventeen, half the people that called us were super upset because they could not bear the thought of putting that plastic thing in their garbage can for, for emotional reasons. The other half were really upset because they had a family of five, their garbage can was already full, now I have to upsize my garbage can. So you're both right. And there's definitely, there's not one camp or the other. There's two camps in that. And so I think that you, you have to approach it from the two camp. Some people would be like, a hundred bucks a month? Sign me up. If nothing, if nothing in front of my house goes to the landfill and it's a hundred bucks a month, boom, do it. It's the same people that shop in mason jars and can go to Trillium every day. But a lot of our population can't do that and they're the ones that Ron's talking about. Like, I don't have space in my garbage can anymore to jump up to a 60 gallon and pay $33 a month instead of 20 is not an option for me. That's a reality. So you do have two realities there.
I agree with that pretty much.
For the sake of moving this forward, I came in this morning liking the idea of being zero waste at some point in the future. Down to like 2050.
Sure.
How we get there is a whole other discussion, but.
Well, I think like with Tina, there's a spectrum. There's the, you really care about everything and the other ones who are just like, throws everything in the trash. It's like, doesn't care about it. So how do you get to awareness? And then, I think it goes a lot with our children. And as we grow into them, learning different ways, different styles.
I think it's gonna be both regulation and in a certain.
Sure, the green schools, the green schools, absolutely. You know, and then the city, if the city's having functions and buildings and having that be in the city-owned facilities, there's those three things, compost, recycling and garbage, you know, and really there, then it's in your eye, you know, then you have those kinds of things around. And, you know, you start with the kids and put it in the city.
Well, you could even start with one of those art displays with plastic bottles, like the Gotta Park. You've seen the art piece and then just stuff it in there. And so people get the idea that we're going to start, like to build in public facilities that we're responsible for.
Well, and I think you see that, you see that in McMinnville. When you go to a McMinnville event, they have the three different, there, everything is three, so you automatically think, oh, McMinnville's this big, you know, everything's right. And it's like, well, that's not, it's true, it's just that the city is making that effort to do it.
It's a start.
It's a start, it is.
I think the key though is Mitch's comment, is you declare your flag, where you want it to be and you'll put it out there. Then all these other activities start entering in.
Into that.
To, to build for that. But I think you, you get more people behind you with the bigger picture and then they're, they're waiting for their one element to come, whether it's plastic bags or, what do you call it, clams?
Styrofoam.
Styrofoam.
Mayor, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
No. So David Alway with the DEQ did a, a really well-thought-out presentation at, at a recycling conference regarding zero waste.
Here it is.
Oh, exactly, that article is, yeah, he's an amazing person. But what, what he did was he looked at the life cycle of whatever product you're talking about. And in terms of zero waste, his first question was, what, what do you mean by that? You mean zero waste going to landfill? You mean zero waste, period? And if you're talking about going to the landfill, he said, so let's say we have a, a package of meat and we need to preserve it because we're gonna use it, you know, a week from now or whatever. There's two ways you can do it. You can put it in a, say a tin can or aluminum can, and when you open it up, you recycle the aluminum can, zero waste to the landfill, supposedly anyway. There's, there's byproducts of the, of recycling it, that's probably going to the landfill. But, um, so you, you have saved the landfill, but, um, but, but you've, you know, created waste in terms of the energy that it took to make the can and recycle the can. So if you're looking at, you know, lowering your waste of, of energy that goes into that, he said, you can take s- s- um, Saran Wrap, wrap the meat up in that and you throw the, the Saran Wrap away. You've got the, um, the Saran Wrap going to the landfill because it's a one-time use, but the amount of energy that it took to make that Saran Wrap is, is considerably less than your tin or, uh, you know, metal can. So again, you, you, you know, okay, zero waste is where you're going, but what do you mean by zero waste? And is, is that, when you look at the life cycle analysis of whatever product you're gonna use, does that meet your zero waste idea or goal?
And you're not gonna find a perfect system. There, there's no, zero waste is.
Isn't even a hundred percent zero waste.
It's not, it's, it's a title, it's like LEED. It's, it's exactly like LEED. Which is great because now through education and people knowing, hearing about LEED and knowing LEED, we've made a. we've made a lot of advances in our building technologies that are more energy efficient. And now it's just kind of secondhand. When we build a home or buy a home, we want to know what kind of appliances are in it, what kind of windows are in it. Thirty years ago, nobody gave a hoot about that. So those are the types of advances that zero waste gets you. I'm not advocating that you go zero waste or not zero waste, but by going zero waste, let's say the council makes a goal, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-fifty, twenty-one, hundred, I don't care when it is, we're going to be zero waste. It gets you that catalyst to start doing things at your events and having staff there to sort through every plate that comes through and, and doing that. And are those things going to be contaminated? Yes, they are. But are you raising awareness and educating along the way? Yes, you are. And so I think you have to be careful about, you know, what, what you think zero waste is. And I, it sounds like you guys understand that it's not a, it's not zero waste, it's a title.
Right, right, it is.
I wouldn't use that term, I think it's misleading.
Zero waste, is it, no, of course.
I use that term in fact. Several other cities have colloquiality now, but.
I mean, that's, that's a river, the advantage of plastic, when you read through the.
Right.
Thing, there's all sorts of exceptions, so, but it's that symbol.
Well, and then you, when the styrofoam containers at the restaurant, what are they going to use?
Paper.
There's several.
Which is more damaging to some, I mean.
Energy, energy use.
Energy wise.
For me, the styrofoam's the toxin issue, not the recyclability issue.
Styrofoam's on the beach.
I, yeah, I'm just saying that, you know, it's.
Right, for everything, there's another flip and another perspective.
Don't have a paper.
Absolutely. And like David Elway does, he looks at, he's looking at the, the whole picture, the whole life cycle analysis instead of taking one little. And, and energy consumption for production and repurposing.
Right, right.
And I think that that, again, going back to Ron's goal of chasing the shiny things, using your terminology of, let's make sure that we have a principle and when something comes along, does it fit in our goals and our plan and our principles? If not, we let it go by the wayside because it's the new shiny thing, but we're sticking with our goals, reducing, reusing and then recycling or composting or whatever it is you decide to do.
Right, that's why. I can tell you, I just attended a session yesterday in Newport where the group of people, and they've approached us, it's all about carbon. So, you know, they didn't want to hear about it, but it was carbon and that's where they're. So I, I just say, you know, it's not a perfect world, so every action we take has a reaction. So as Tina said, you know, encourage paper bags and you're, you'll have this other group.
It's always going to be given.
At your throat. We need to find a balance. I guess Ron, what I would throw out is, is like you did with sewer and water, are there some interim steps since this group doesn't make decisions here? That we?
Yeah.
How do we advance? Well, what, what I've kind of hearing from everybody is, or at least what I'm picking up, is however we define it, we start with something that falls along this line of zero waste. So the first thing that I would be looking to do is to try to refine that definition. That then gives us, as Tina mentioned, that just gives us the parameters within which we would work within. And then, like everything else, we've talked about, we start, you're going to look at a combination of regulatory, you're going to look at a combination of educational, we look for the low hanging fruit and we move forward. As an example, the Girls in the Dirt program that we had, modest success. Popular to an, to an extent, but some very small scale. It only reached a few people. So we can look at, but I think that begins by saying, okay, if we're going to say zero waste or whatever term we want to use, then we define exactly the parameters and then we start making decisions within that parameters. And we can come up with ideas. Just type in Google, how to reduce my waste, how to, how to process my waste, how to do something like that and you'll find billions of suggestions.
Ron, Ron, that would, that'd be, I mean, I would support that with the exception of, I really want to get rid of that plastic that one clients, and that doesn't quite get to that, but it could be something like that.
And I think that's a step towards a zero waste, that's what.
Are there, are there things that can be taken out of the waste stream that are now? I'm thinking, as Julie mentioned, what's number five for plastics? That, is there a program that, that you guys can't recycle number five plastics, but there's a way to do that? Could the city get involved in something? And are there other products like?
So anytime that you have single stream, so clean, single stream products. So one of the things that I was trying to get the Lincoln County Solid Waste Advisory Committee to do is a film plastic collection program. Because besides the bag, there's a lot of film plastic out there. And we have a processor in the Pacific Northwest that wants film plastic, it's truck stacking, which is a very popular product that comes right back to all of our communities. And so I was trying to, you know, programs like that, that make sense, single stream, but.
So I'm sorry, so why can't you take it, why, why?
Stories.
We're keeping it dry.
So you have to keep it single stream, so you would have to have a collection port for it, which we do. And we have a great recycling center.
If we take it down to the recycle.
You'd have to take it down. Safeway and those places take it as well and whether they would give it to us or keep doing whatever it is, they, I'm hoping that that's where they take it. But the, anytime you have that, there's challenges. So the challenge with this one is, is Trex is like, yes, we want it. All right, great. And they're like, we will pick up a minimum of forty bales. And oh, by the way, they have to stay dry.
So now we got to build.
So now there's a building involved in that. And so, you know, it's things like that, that our little company can't just say, yep, we're going to do it. And, you know, we have the capital and stuff, but collectively and with money that the solid waste district has, which I think hopefully everybody here knows some of your news. So every customer in Lincoln County pays a fee to the solid waste district. And the solid waste district is supposed to do things to help move solid waste along and similar things that you're talking about. Unfortunately, they've been a little stagnant lately, but they have funds. And so my thing is like, let's do something with these funds that's a county-wide program. And I think Judy was on board with that, but they also have funds that we could use for green schools. And so there's funding out there that wouldn't cost our ratepayers anything. And we could institute programs like source separated programs, like what you're talking about. I mean, I, some of you, maybe nobody, well, we used to collect number two milk jugs in the eighties at our recycling center and it was a volunteer group that showed up every Saturday morning and collected milk jugs. And we did it cooperatively with them and we hauled them to market for them after they collected it. So there, there is opportunities out there. We've just kind of gotten away from that grassroots thing because we've got these big blue cans, everything went in it.
So in that vein, I know you don't collect things less than three ounces of plastic and I know the marijuana industry has a great deal of plastic. So I came up with a way Mitch cut holes with me in these totes and we've put in totes at all the dispensaries that will participate. And he and I have garbage bins of number five plastic waiting to do something with it. But because you're not, you, don't think a sanitary service can't pretty, you know, can't take that. We're sitting on a hundred gallons of number five plastic.
What is it? What kind of container is it?
Between squeeze pop top.
They're, they're, they're childproof, it's number five plastic.
Like the pill bottles?
Yeah, kind of.
Pill bottles are also number five.
Yeah, anyway, it's plastic that is a childproof container. So at the League of Oregon Cities meeting, I asked, you know, is there a way in which you could recertify that the pounds per square inch is still childproof? You know, because they can't be reused.
Oh, you can't reuse them.
Cannot reuse them. Some dispensaries, if you come in, this is my container, can you put it back in this container? They'll say yes. But as a whole, could they reuse all the things that they've collected? They cannot due to, you know, the standards. So, so the attorney said he would look into that kind of some, you know, that, but I haven't heard anything back. So that's how I heard about Agilex. They're like, oh, take the, take the plastic there. I talked to Agilex and they're like, well, we have above-ground carbon reserves, is what they're calling, all the plastic that they're holding on to for when their capacity is able to produce fuel from five plast-, you know, plastics. Because right now there's only styrofoam. So, so we're, we're just keep collecting it in that way, I don't know what's going to happen.
And that's, I mean, that, that's a grassroots thing and, and a market will come along. I mean, that's the great thing about America, right? When there's a need, somebody creates a market for it. And, and the, you know, the marijuana industry is new enough that nobody's created, I mean, there's a business opportunity. If you can figure, you know, and it takes, the beer industry just now, within the last two years, and I think Ron was at the seminar with me, came up with reusable beer bottles again. I mean, we all remember blitz wine hard bottles, they're all scratched up and you reused them. Well, now it's starting to swing back where they're, they're doing that again. So things, things eventually shift and mold and, and come around. But things, people like you, like, hey, we've got all this stuff, let's figure out something to do with it. You know, that's, doesn't go into the bigger picture of, but it's that type of thing. And, and I think Dick hit on something that's really interesting and you will see it more in cities you go to, that you'll see a banner on a city's, you know, welcome to XYZ city, a carbon neutral city. And for me, as, as a citizen, I would much rather see Lincoln City be more carbon neutral than zero waste. Because now you're talking energy, you're talking water, you're talking waste, all of the things that really impact our environment.
Put those solar panels above the wastewater treatment center.
I'd like to thank Judy again for you taking the time for the solid waste.
She does a really good job.
Because we try to do that every time through council, but not all councillors that are as interested or willing to go every meeting. So it's nice to have a representation at the, and that's why you get appointed, why you raise your hands to solid waste transportation or ODOT, the different meetings we go to, just to advocate for Lincoln City.
July twenty-ninth, the solid waste district is doing a field trip to a landfill, PRC, the composting facility and then a recycling processor. So if you're interested in that, contact myself or Judy and we can get you in touch with Mark. I unfortunately can't make it.
Are you able?
We have a work meeting that day.
Oh, we've got to work.
Mr. Mayor, what I'm hearing then is a big picture goal, something like zero waste, carbon neutral, something like that. Bring back a couple of definitions that you could review and say, yes, this fits it. And then a few ideas on things that can't fit within that. The ideas are not necessarily things that we would be recommending we do, but they are to stimulate further discussion of the types of, types of activities that could fit within those parameters. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
That's what I was.
I would hope if, if I can, that these things would be measurable, you know, I think we've always, to your point of the dirt gals, you know, the measurement is important to, to show the public at large that they are having impact.
From the regulatory stand, are we still looking at ban styrofoam, ban one-time use plastic? Is that still on the table?
We will back some of the. That may fall under, under this.
And more than just the end user shopping bag, but more total plastic, you know, in the capacity of restaurants, produce and what, what the house built didn't cover.
And that's got to be regulatory.
Regulatory, yeah.
Yeah, well, like you said, the outlets, yeah, because they're not from here, they're not. That's big companies that.
And that's, I mean, with, with a huge tourism base and they see styrofoam and plastic, they go, oh, and you know, and that's on us.
A lot of the shoe stores used to use string to wrap their boxes. And strings so you can carry out your boxes of shoes.
I was in Salem at one of my PT appointments and I went shopping afterwards and I purchased a few, couple of things and they said, would you like to, would you like a bag for that clothing? Yeah, because I didn't want to lose parts of them, carry them out the store. It was five cents and it was a paper bag. So you didn't have to store. And I just, they would impress me, but okay, I'll bring my own bag next time. It's a whole different way of thinking though, because you just, they usually just tuck your clothes or whatever you're buying into a bag and don't even think about it, that you can bring your own.
A lot of those are considered some use because of the.
I apologize for being an hour plus early. I'm hoping you can fill the rest of your day with something useful.
Making it for council?
Yeah, we'll make it, I'll just add a.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, great work.
Helpful information.